Two minutes, January seventeenth, we're in the board meeting.
So move, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. February thirteenth, special board meeting.
Your turn, John. Okay, I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, excuse absence boards members, we got a couple guys away on vacation. I make a motion to excuse Tim Wundrick and Tony Adson.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of vouchers.
We've got general fund, hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, fifty-four cents. Water fund, hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, one oh six oh four. We've got sewer fund, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents. And the capital fund, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, thirty-six cents. They've all been audited by Dan and I, and I make a motion to vouch for this.
I'll second.
Okay, I just want to say the water fund, roughly is a hundred and seventy-five thousand of that is when we rolled over our short-term financing on the groundwater project and went to the long-term bonding. So we had to pay off the short-term bond, so that's why that's so high this month. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And aye. Unfinished business, phase two wastewater upgrades. I think we're wrapping that up pretty much tonight. Everybody have a copy of, basically it's a project completion certificate for project number sixty-two-nine dash oh five dash oh one. Certifies that the phase two of the wastewater treatment plant is complete. I just need a motion for me to be able to authorize that, sign this for the village.
I'll make the motion there, and I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we need to also do, and this is, this is all stuff we have to do in order to go to the long-term bonding with EFC, and that's why we're doing this. We also need a resolution, wastewater treatment plant, phase two project completion resolution. Whereas the village of Lawwell substantially completed construction of the wastewater treatment plant, phase two project. And whereas the village board of trustees of the village of Lawwell received notice of final completion for the project, now therefore be resolved that the village board of trustees of village of Lawwell accepts the project as complete and authorize final payment to the contractors. I, Brittany Venetti, village clerk treasurer of the village of Lawwell, do hereby certify that the formant resolution adopted by the village board of village of Lawwell on, would be today's date, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, by the following vote. Myself, yes.
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
And Chuck?
Aye.
I believe that's all we have on that, and that's...
That's all that's gonna allow you to, like you just said, take your short-term financing to long-term. Your, there's some contingency money they're releasing there and all that stuff, municipal solutions is handling for you, but that's, yeah, that's a good, good step to move the financing.
Okay, groundwater well development project. We got a change order from Manford Construction, change order number two. Basically what it is, it's eighty-three thousand, ninety-six dollars and sixty cents. It's a decrease in the project. It's actually coming in, so we're gonna save a little money on that. And that project is still ongoing. And we're waiting for some equipment, because we're doing some upgrades at the three million gallon tank and on the East State Street. And that should be done next month in March. It's just held up for some equipment. And while we're on that subject, should we bring up the new project?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we talked with the municipal board, and we've got probably seventy, seventy-five percent of the preliminary works already done up at the watershed for trying to develop more wells. We have five more sites up there that have been scoped out and are all mapped out with Jay Billings and geologists. So what we'd like to do is move forward and develop two more wells up there. I believe it's site one and two, which is the closest to our main line that we put in. So we'd like to, hopefully by May, start some test wells up there to see if they're going to be profitable. And we picked that site because they're the closest to our main line. It'll be the least expensive for us to hook up and get online, and...
It was also the most likely something to produce a quality, quality and quantity of water that we want also.
So, in that project, to get it started, we're looking at, between GIMMO engineering and the geologists and the test drilled wells to be drilled, we're probably looking at about sixty-five to seventy thousand. And our thought was, we're going to pull that out of reserves, keep the project moving forward, and then we're gonna put in for a planning grant to do the scope of the overall project. And if we get the planning grant, we can return that money back to our reserves. So I just put this out to the board. I've already talked to Tim. Tim's on board with it, even though he's on vacation, and nobody has any problems. We can move forward with it.
And just a point of interest, the, the water from the wells is a way better quality than surface water. So it, it's ultimately saving in chemicals and in filtering and the whole nine yards, so it, it's actually a benefit to the village in the long run.
Yeah, the, the projects, we'll have to do, once we do this test well project, we'll have to do a preliminary engineering report. That's what that planning grant will, will fund. And to further develop the test wells into production wells, once we do that, we'll, we'll find that the water quality, because it's groundwater, is better and, and is better than the surface water, a lot less treatment. In that preliminary engineering report, we're gonna show, we're gonna demonstrate how much money that's gonna save. We don't know the number yet, but we know the chemicals that we use for the groundwater is, is way less. And you also don't have the maintenance to the Paul unit, which is another big expense item that we, that we have to do. We'll keep that, you know, but that's always been a temporary solution, filtration, filtration solution. We'll keep it, but using it less is gonna allow it to last longer. Slow sand filter is, is what was there, done in the nineties, I think early nineties, and that, that, we're still maintaining that as well. So we'll, we'll have all these systems, we'll just be using them less, the more groundwater we can add.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Do we need to make a motion on this change order?
Yes, we probably should.
I'll move on. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, and that, that was made for change order, Chuck, Chuck? Was that made for change order? So, I kinda gave Joe a budget item for the, the new stuff going forward. I'm still waiting for a proposal from NGI, which is Jay Billings. And once, once he scopes that out, I'll, I'll give you a formal proposal, but the budgets, we talked about it today with Jay, so we should be good with that budget, but you'll get a formal proposal from us.
And while you're, we're at, going back to the wastewater treatment plant, we should be getting some credits down the road on that.
Yeah, and, and so there was, when we started talking about phase three of the wastewater treatment facility, we provided a proposal to go after some funding and then follow that up with coordination with those funding agencies. We heard that we were unsuccessful in getting the funding, so the money that's left in that small scope, we'll, we'll give you a deduct change order for that, since, since that project's tabled. And on the wastewater phase two agreement, there were some O and M manuals and SOPs that we had in our scope of work. After talking it over with Paul, the O and M manuals that we have currently are good enough, so we don't need to do that work. We had to hire a subconsultant to do that anyways, and they don't, they no longer do that work, so we were gonna struggle to get it completed and talk it over with Paul, and we'll just give that money back to him. So that's about thirty-five thousand dollars that will be deducted, you, you know, in the end. It's, it's money you're not going to spend, yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Tree lighting, LED conversion. Boy, this is a, spin a fight. The last email I got on February thirteenth says, hi Joe, we did get the last approval from National Grid for the new lights installed. We are working with a construction contractor to get a timeframe within the next few weeks to get up there to do the install. As soon as we get it, I will let you know. Sorry for the delay, but it won't be much longer now. We're still waiting on New York Power for it. Zoning changes, Tim gave me a call today, and he's pretty much got those wrapped up as far as, we're talking driveways, handicap ramps. And they're also trying to clean up a couple, a few other items that are in the zoning change, so we won't have any problem when they get moving forward with the DRI that people can move their projects right along. And he says he hopes they'll have that all wrapped up and be able to bring to us at the next board meeting. Craft sewer charges. Water for January twenty twenty-four, there was none. Sewer for January twenty twenty-four was nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Need a motion on that one.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Budget amendment for the water fund. We motion approve that.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan? Yep.
Tax cap override. Okay, we've started work on the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And as always, I hope we don't have to do this, but to meet the requirements for New York State on the dates that things have to be done. We definitely need to move on this and basically schedule a public hearing for the March twentieth board meeting. And as always, we have to do this, but we don't have to pass it until we actually adopt the budget. And if we don't need it, then we don't have to pass it. But we do need to get a public hearing scheduled for, I think it's March twentieth, I think.
I'll make the motion that we have the public hearing March twentieth at four P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I'm hoping that we'll be doing okay, because of course everybody knows it was a reassessment, so that changes tax rates, and maybe we'll get lucky again this year and not have to go out of our crazy with recent taxes. Exemption report. Somebody have any questions on that? That's, or does anybody looking to raise it, not on this, what's out there? Nonprofits, clergy, agriculture. No questions on that?
Do we need to make a motion to keep it the same as it was last year, or?
Well, this one, no, this, this is the one I was thinking. This is a different, let's just say what's, what's in the community. I think that one comes in November that we make changes on. Okay, the next one's a sewer rate increase of three percent. Going over the, I'd say it's working on the budget for next year. We feel we need a, and the municipal board agreed, a three percent sewer rate increase to be effective November of twenty twenty-four. We would need to schedule a public hearing on that, say for March twentieth also.
I'll make that motion to get there, for the public hearing for the sewer rate increase.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That will still, for a matter of public record, the lessons have changed. Back the last time I did a study of the ten communities, we weren't number one anymore in water, we were number two, but with our sewer rates, we stayed number one overall. So our sewer rates-
We're still gonna-
Are very, very competitive.
I think everybody should see it's not, the difference between two and a half, three percent. Basically, it's just gonna keep the sewer fund.
The average sewer bill is a hundred and eighty dollars a year. You're looking at three dollars, four dollars, one of the three dollars, two would be six, so a little less than six dollars.
For the year?
Yeah.
I was gonna say it's only like two something for the quarter, or for the half year.
The state comptroller level is six hundred and ninety dollars a year. The state comptroller level, that, where you have to get special approval to go above it, is six ninety, so you're well under that.
So we're all set for the public hearing, gonna have March twentieth, I think. Holiday leave statement, the election day. What that's all about is, normally, when we have a village election, it's held here in the large courtroom. And so, nobody can be, none of our staff can be working that day, and they have to leave by eleven-thirty. It's actually in their contract that the village municipal office will be closed at eleven-thirty on village election day, if there's a village election held that day. Well, we are holding an election, but from what I'm hearing, we've gotta go down to the-
DMV?
Yes.
Election office to place your vote this year. It's not, they're not gonna be held here. So my question is, normally our people would be off. Can we, I guess what I like to say is, they still need, according to the times, they still need to be off. Can we change that to like a floater, so they don't have to take that day, but if they need an afternoon another day? Board okay with making that a floating holiday, if there's no village election in it?
Those are two departments.
I'm good with that either. I'll be there too.
I'll make the motion then, that we allow it to be a floater.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Big correspondence, it's just New York State, the Guardian, North, of the D R I award. Everybody's, is that all right?
The, I wanna thank the mayor for asking me to go, and contingent of a sweat up there. And there was a lot of people that played a huge role in that, and it's tough to single out people. But I, I think a fair amount of the credit in the village goes to Joe and Paul, and in the county, I think, at least Cassandra Beal, and possibly, I believe Cheyenne Steria helped again.
Brittany Davis was involved.
Brittany Davis, yes. She didn't go that day, but she was involved, thank you. And every, everybody that went has a nice picture frame that Paul worked up for us, and we made sure that everybody that went that day got the picture, so. If, if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected, I'd like to be on the D R I committee, and that's gonna be the mayor's decision. It was, it was a great day, and I look forward to advance, the village being advanced because of this ten million dollars.
And if anybody out there got a project, they still have time to get them turned in, because they're gonna be reviewing all existing projects and looking at any new ones come up.
Basically, mayor starts from scratch and starts.
And we had one virtual meeting with New York State on it, giving us an idea of what we gotta do, and they're gonna be getting back to us, and hopefully the first part of March, we'll be setting up another meeting with state representatives. They wanna come to town, they wanna walk the boundaries, and then sit down with us and discuss, they wanna set up the different committees. It's moving along, but it's basically on when the state wants to do something. Okay, we got the rapeo updates for correspondence. Mickey texted me, he's not able to make it tonight, so I don't know, anybody have questions there? Pretty straightforward. Village attorney, eh?
One, one brief thing. Let me remember that for many, many years, village and town worked together for this joint recreation commission. And the state's got all kinds of twists and turns in it, and several years ago, neither the town nor the village followed through on that process. But nevertheless, as I understand it, village and the town are going to continue their efforts with this joint recreation commission. I spoke with the attorney for the town, and, and he and I were discussing and thought that it probably makes sense for there to be a written agreement, a very simple, intermunicipal agreement between the town and the village. It just memorializes it, spells out everybody's responsibilities, just so that you've got something that memorializes it. The attorney for the town is working on a draft. When I get it, I'll, I'll go through it, and, and certainly, it will go to the, to you folks to take a look at it. Town board will get it too, before you decide whether to support it or not, but it makes good sense for memorializing.
We did change, which you may be aware of, it's no longer called the recreation commission, it's now a recreation board.
Well, it, and, and those, those instances will, will, will have it memorialized, but I just think it makes sense to have something in black and white so that we don't have any misunderstandings, but that was it, it's fair.
Well, one of the reasons for changing the board was, it was a great, big, long, about seventy-page report that puts a commission that has to go in New York State, we're taking board of those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, New York State doesn't make anything easy sometimes, but, but so you can, you can, you can essentially fulfill the same good goals, but without big brother of New York State looking over your shoulder. So it, it is a simple process.
I haven't seen the mayor, she's never been, she's not seen the other side.
The mayor, dollar.
Okay. That, that was it, sir.
All right, along that same recreation line. St. Louis County, members of the hockey association. The chiller up there at the ice rink is pretty much added. So we'll, so they need to upgrade the, the chiller. Depending on the counties that they would come in at. They range anywhere from a hundred and forty-three thousand to a hundred and seventy-two thousand for a new chiller. And so they're asking the village if we'd be interested in contributing towards that program, which takes care of our children, they're up there, we have free skate for all village residents. And a couple things, a new chiller would possibly, they wouldn't have all the problems like they had this year with shutting down because of the warm weather, it'll kind of keep the ice. And the other thing is, it'll probably save us some money in the end, because it would run more efficient. And so, I looked, and we have about thirty thousand in ARP money that we were thinking of using maybe in the parks anyway for... So my question is, is the board willing to, and can we legally put that towards the chiller? I know the town is planning on putting in thirty thousand of their ARPA funds.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at the specific regs for the ARPA funds. I, I suspect that it's-
It can be used for recreation.
I, I suspect it can be, but, but again, it would just be a board decision, a simple majority. I make that motion. I make the motion that we follow suit with the town board and, and use our ARPA funds for the new chiller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have. What pressure, do you have it?
Nothing for you.
Chief of police.
I have good news for once. As far as hiring, we're ready to move forward and with your blessing, hire a new full-time patrolman. Shane Gladel, he's twenty-five years old, was originally from Martinsburg, moved out of the area for work, he is moving back. But if, just a quick timeline, he's in the academy currently, so he would be getting done of that around May first. And then he has two weeks of phase two training, is what they call it, play arms and a couple other things. That starts June third, and then state minimum is a hundred and forty hours, I think, through DCJS. So we could, tentatively, if everything goes good, we could have him on the road full-time by mid-July fair season, basically. So that would be, that would bring us up to three full-time, which would help with coverage immensely, so.
I think that's your decision. It's in the budget?
Yeah, we have two, so.
I think, I think what Daryl's on the force is us to make a motion to give him the go-ahead to hire this guy.
So I'd like to, I'd like to bring him in April first. It's before phase two, but it would give him about thirty days to write with Sergeant Martin, get the just the things. It wouldn't count towards his actual DCJS time that he needs, but it would get him, him rolling. If we could, I think it's right around April first-ish.
They have to write sixty days, isn't it?
What's that?
They have to write like sixty days?
Uh, yeah, it's more than that, yeah, it's actually, yeah, it's hours and, and more if needed, so we can extend that out too, but everything's passed, everything, he's good to go now. Civil service, this is obviously pending civil service approval, which she would have that approval by next Wednesday, she said, so I talked to her yesterday. The next round of agility tests are actually also next Wednesday, so hopefully we have good news Wednesday afternoon.
I'll make that motion that's contingent on the testing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, we do have another part-timer that's, used to work for us a couple years ago. He's showed some interest about coming back too, so that's another, another avenue for, for some coverage, so we're getting, we're getting there.
That's it?
Good call.
Can I ask a question? So, we discussed a, a new issue over at the Bowse's. And I guess my first can, question is, I guess you get a call over there quite a bit, maybe once a day?
Sometimes more.
And that's, that's unacceptable. And my next question is, do they have cameras in their room?
Not inside the room, no, and I, I would imagine that's a policy issue on, on Bowse's. They're in- They're in every common area, the outside areas, parking lots, but nothing inside the rooms themselves, which is not usually where stuff goes on with us anyway, but I will say though, it has gotten much better. They do have a part-time resource officer there now, part-time for now, he will be full-time in the fall, and that has really helped, that is, our call line is, is way down.
How many students, how many students have them?
Uh, I think they float, I want to say between 25 and low 30s probably. But they're from Adirondack, Webb, Beaver River, you know, every school in our county too, so. But it has gotten, it has gotten much better since they started that, that part-time, that sort of. So they are making, they are trying, they are, they know there's a problem, they're, they're well aware that this can't continue, and they've been, and they're always great with us anyway, so.
I would also like to request an executive session for Darryl on these, you know what I'm talking about, this little suit, and I would like to ask Mr. Burles to stay. Paul and Brittany don't have to, but we've got to get somewhere on that.
I'll get the information I might have.
Thank you.
Good thing, Paul?
Um, not really. Been a slow winter, good winter. I like it with no snow. Our guys don't. I just wanted to bring up that, with that grant money that we got for Veterans Park, we have talked to Sunshine Jenkins from New York State Parks, she's the overseer of the grant. We did have a meeting with her a couple of weeks ago, so that's starting to get in the process. We've met with the engineering firm, and so hopefully we can start moving on that.
A request on that. The streets that boundary that Waters Terrace, Easton, and Dane Street, I think it would be nice if we could allow for gathering and those that wanted it.
We didn't let it finish.
Huh?
We didn't let it finish.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Once we, once we actually get our paperwork in order, and we start to have a plan on what we're going to do, I think we should bring the public in.
Beautiful.
And be transparent on what we're going to do, maybe get some better ideas. The ideas that we have now are mine and Joe's, and so, thanks for interrupting me.
Yours and Joe's. Don't tell them that. Of course, they're going to hear that.
They get five minutes to talk, and you take it away from you.
But we're looking at, we're looking at ways to protect the people, like the property where borders, say Waters Terrace to the villages.
The reason I bring it up is, there's been a few, more than one, constituents that have brought to that to my attention, that they would like to know what's going on.
And once, once we do have preliminary plan of what we want to do, we will let the public see and get their input on that.
We'll actually have a drawing, which they'll show.
I mean, we've talked about it for quite a while, doing a splash pad there, we had a great brainstorm that, you know, a bathroom up there would be something perfect, because it could be used for the bathroom, maybe the backside as a pump station if we do do a splash pad. But I think baseline, right now, we're looking at the walking trail, the pad in front of the fan stand, everything's EADA compliant, so that's where we're beginning.
And the drainage, that's number one.
Drainage is number one.
So. Paddocks obviously have to be locked, none?
Taken care of. I already thought about this.
I know.
Right. Yeah.
And that?
That would be it.
Captain Future Planning, he's not here tonight. Personnel, executive session for that. Anything on finance?
Nope.
Fire department?
Fire department, we had Joe, a couple of chicken barbecues, a couple spaghetti dinners, I missed three or four, I missed one of the spaghetti dinners, but chicken barbecues, you want to get there at 11 o'clock, you're not getting chicken, because they go fast. We all have talked about the roof issue that we have going on, the firehouse, and I guess Paul, the fire department are working on that, and other than that, whatever you have to bring up, Joe?
The only thing I got is, we did get our new engine in service, so it's, it's up there and running. It ran its first call the other night, actually, and worked good. There's a few technical things we're working out with the sales company, but it's little things, it's nothing that's putting it out of service, so, so it's, it's up there if anyone wants to go look at it at some point, but.
That's not the one that didn't start, is it?
It's not the one that didn't start, no. We put a lot of money in the batteries the last six months, seems like all of our batteries decided to just expire all at the same time, so, but, but no, she's, she's up there, she's running. It's a little different than what we're used to, it's not as, doesn't have as many gizmos and gadgets, so we, the drop tank doesn't come down to us anymore, so we have to go up and pull it down off the top, and ladders are, are inside a compartment as opposed to on a rack that comes down to us, but that's, that's what you get when you can't afford to pay for a million-dollar truck, because it probably is what we paid for that one, so.
That, that is number one, instead of that year two.
Yeah. And we got it a lot quicker. The million-dollar truck takes four years to get, so.
Police department, I think we covered all that. Spying and zoning, Tony's not here. Run up to the border?
Just about the, the 3% increase, that's about, amazing.
Counting anything?
No, good.
Counting.
I think I covered everything with the, the administration.
Recreation, I'll go over that with the chiller. Raquel, who got his report? Brings us down to public comment. Anybody got any?
What up?
I've got a couple of things. Going back to the water wells, are those two wells going to be reserved, or if they come in, are they going to immediately going to the line to boost production?
Which well? The two new ones or one of them?
The two new ones.
So let me give you a little background on that. So, we put those two new wells in last year, so they are running, not at full capacity, but almost full capacity. We are pulling roughly 400,000 to 500,000 gallons a day with them. So everything else in the plant, our poly unit has dropped from, say, 95% usage down to 60, which is saving us tons of money. Our sand beds, which is where we filter all of our surface water, those, we have them running just trickling, because we don't need them anymore. They're kind of like a, would you say, a reserve map?
Yeah.
They're just a reserve. So, our thought, and it's been our thought for a while, if, the more wells we can get online, so if we can get two more wells online, and they produce like these two wells are producing, we don't have to use any surface water at all, which is going to save us tons of, tons of money. Yeah.
Plus, get totally, get rid of the poly unit.
Right.
And the poly unit is pretty much outlived its life expectancy, even though it was $1.3 million, but it's run at full capacity for so long, and it's, and right now, it's got to the point where we're putting money back into it in repairs, and that, the repairs on that unit are costly.
So the short answer is, they would go into, right out of production line?
Correct, yes. So I, I think our ultimate goal over a extended period of time is to get six wells up there. So we have enough water in those wells, say two wells go down, boom, we use two other wells, you know, so we can deplete ourselves and use.
And groundwater is much cleaner water.
Yeah. And the New York State and the federal government are pushing for groundwater.
Didn't you have to get permission from the state to up your production of groundwater before? To do this, or?
Yes, yeah. So, I don't know, Matt, you might be aware, if we put two more wells online, I don't think we'll have to get a bigger.
Your water supply application is what we're talking about from the DCs.
Yes.
And that will, you'll just, you'll move water around, you'll reduce your surface water and take more on the ground. You'll have to add those wells to your water supply application, the new ones, but you're not going to probably be allowed to take more water from the property, and you don't need it, so that's why you won't.
Right, so our issue has never been how much water we have out there, because we have plenty of water, it's how much water we could filter. So now that you have this cleaner, better water, you're not filtering as much, so you can produce more. So we could produce up to that, what was it, 1 point?
What's a 2.1?
Or 2.1 per day.
Is your supply application?
Right.
You don't use that much. You know, you're, you're, I mean, I think in big days, you're going to want to have a pound a day. If Kraft has something going on, or you have a bean break or something like that.
I mean, if there was a big expansion, say in the village, there's not a saying we can't go back to DC and ask for that allocation to be increased again.
Right, and I think, I don't think it would be as hard, being that we're getting groundwater compared to surface water.
With the DRI expansion, increase uses maybe? With all the DRIs coming down, that raise it up to a point where that we, we looked at?
To give you an idea about your water usage, you're about 400,000 gallons a day is residential, about 400,000 a day is everything other than Kraft, and the rest is Kraft.
I'm looking at the, Matt, I was looking at the daily flow, and on January 12th, for instance, Kraft used 1,175,000 gallons, but on January 1st, which was a holiday, they used 584,000, but most days, they're running anywhere from 800,000 to 900,000 gallons to get out of water a day.
That's, that's this time of year in the summer, that's going to go up, because they use more, because they use some of it for food.
And your, your residential, I should, I can call them residential, the rest of the village uses 400,000, that's the hospital, and that's homes, and 60% is Kraft, 20% is rusty industries, and 20% is residential.
And I think our biggest thing, as a village, we want to see how these wells produce this summer, you know, if we start to get a dry summer, you know, so it's.
There's really no, come, like, also, from July and August, that's when they're...
How long it's bad.
These are, these are gravel wells, your geology up there is, is mostly sand and gravel, so the water quality is very high, because it's, it's not, you're not going to get the iron and things like that you get from a bedrock well. So, the, the trick is, and what we're looking for is the depth before we get into that bedrock, and that, that is essentially your storage capacity, you know, so you're taking the water out of that gravel hole that's out there.
As for my next question, are we going to write out the aquifer by any?
No, and, the geologist gave us some history lessons today about how glaciers and ice dams and all this created where we live. And it was, it was an interesting conversation, but no, he's, the, the land that you guys own up there, your watershed is, is one of the best, and I put him on the spot and tried to ask him how confident he was in his ability to find us another well that was as good as the one he found a couple of years ago, and he said mainly, it's, it's your watershed that's the reason. I thought it was Joe's rabbit foot, but it was, it was, he said it's our, our watershed, so, so that's good.
So give credit to the foreclenders for buying all that.
Yeah. And the ice dam and the glacier, and they had one of that, the last ice age.
Any other public comment?
This one's for you, Darryl. And I hate to harp on it, but the deserted crosswalks in Long Hill. I know not a lot you can do if you aren't there or don't see it, but the one in front of the school, and the one in front of Kathy's barber shop down there. The other day, I was, matter of fact, the day before yesterday, I was coming north, so I was coming up South State, and I stopped, and a woman started to step out on the other side, and luckily she saw the first vehicle, because it darn near brushed her coat. Three of them went by her. The fourth one skidded to a stop, finally, because I was back in traffic up on my side, and she kind of ducked and ran across, literally, to get across. And those are probably the two worst ones, and I hate to harp on it, but it's only a matter of time, and we've had them in the past for crosswalks.
You're, you're right, if you're not right there.
You know, and I realize, if you're not there, you're not going to see it.
We, we put a lot of emphasis on it, and now, now the warmer weather too, will, because I think those signs help too, the signs will be back out here shortly if the weather cooperates, so.
But I will say that, like, in front of Kathy's barber shop, where people like to park just past the crosswalk, these guys have been right on top of it for the most parts, and I see them rating tickets.
I've seen them park and hop in the cross.
I know. And I'll, I'll stop and go into Kathy's and say, whose vehicle is it?
Cross metro.
You need to move it.
I think we wrote, without the, 160 parking tickets last year, I think, but then there could be, we could double that.
I mean, I hate to harp on it, I go here, you drive with the sign.
I know.
If you aren't there, you aren't going to see it.
We beat our heads against the wall every, and we've had some good meetings with the school too, with, with the crosswalks around the school, and they've really stepped up their game too, especially over on Trinity, they have, now they have a second crossing guard over on Trinity, they have spotters now because of the buses, so we're, we're trying, so.
Yeah, it's after school, I've heard that I've seen it the worst one, that or right around lunchtime, seems to be a bad one.
Yeah, it's congested then, yep. For sure it is.
Anything else?
A break?
Does we need a motion to go into executive session?
To discuss pending threat to the proposed litigation. And/or, and/or personnel matters?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.